Benefit of time for everybody, we should start it.
Insha Allah, thank you brother. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Was salaatu was salaam ala nabiina muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahbihi assalamualaikum. Warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. And wish you and your families a blessed Ramadan. It is indeed a great pleasure to welcome you to this public hearing. We are holding it with or in collaboration with Bahrain Association of Banks. U E Banks Federation and T K B B Participation Banks Association of Turkey. Let me take you briefly through the agenda of the session. After completing my welcoming remarks, our brother Amir Mustafa Ansari will discuss or will start the discussion on two exposure drafts, which are Sharia Supervisory Board Appointment and Composition and Sharia Supervisory Board Functions and Operations. We will conclude Insha Allah in one and a half hour. So, in terms of my welcoming remarks, just a few points about these exposure draft. We were able to issue the exposure draft on December two thousand and twenty-three and we held three public hearings so far. The first public hearing was held on thirtieth of January and it was in English. The second one was held also in English on twenty-first of February. And the last one was held on sixth of March in Arabic. So this is the fourth public hearing. We're discussing two exposure draft today. The fifth public hearing will be will be held tomorrow and after Eid Insha Allah right or the week right after the week after Eid, we will hold Insha Allah the Arabic public hearing to discuss the final or the last two exposure draft to chart subsidiaries and windows. So, we're hoping to complete the due process within this year and issue the final standards. Of course, in terms of the approach for managing this session, you're welcome to post your questions and feedback on the Q and A tab. And if after the session you feel you or you would like to add or send more comments, you are welcome to do so. And you can share it with us on governance at I F E dot com. This is it from my side. Now I would like to welcome our brother Amir Mustafa Ansari to start the discussion on the exposure draft. Brother, please.
A'udzubillahiminashshataanirradheem bismillahirrahmanirrahim rabbishahli sattih wa yasidli amli wahlul laqdatan millisani yafahu fali. Ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and good afternoon. And depending on where you are in which part of the world you are right now, depending on that, good morning or good evening as well. Thank you very much Sister Zahra for a brief initial remarks. And today, I will also prefer to keep my initial remarks very limited because as Sister Zahra already mentioned, that these are these this is continuation of the public hearings on the six standards, which are related to the Sharia Governance Framework. And since already two public hearings are conducted and lot of initial remarks have been provided earlier. And I can see from the attendance list that lot of you have already participated in the earlier meetings as well. So I'm not going to discuss the overall Sharia Governance Framework document or with the with that fourteen principles or other issues that we have discussed earlier. Again, everybody amongst you is more than welcome to provide any additional comments that you may have. But with regard to my focus of discussion today, because of against the same reason that we are having it in the holy month of Ramadan and the time is kept a bit short. And it is actually divided into meetings, two public hearing meetings. The it is today and tomorrow. And we have kept it like one and a half hour each day. And I'm afraid it might not be enough. Initially, we planned four hours meeting and then another four hours meeting and now we are both holding three hours, two sessions in three hours. So it's already a very enriched, very valuable discussion that we already had. And now we are willing to take it forward Insha Allah to the more focused area. So today we are going to focus on one of the most significant aspects of Sharia Governance Framework, that is the Sharia Supervisory Board of Islamic Financial Institutions. And if you allow me to quote from the Framework Document, it says that every, this is our principle number six, an institution shall have in place an independent, competent, empowered and adequately resourced Sharia Supervisory Board. So we are talking about very important, it's only one single sentence and whenever you were having discussion on this one, I said that this once, this one single sentence needs three standards, actually it needs four standards to actually cover this area. And that is an independent, competent, empowered and adequately resourced Sharia. As I mentioned that I don't want to go in detail with the with respect to the discussions that we had already. But for the benefit of today's audience, I would just like to summarize one aspect that in order to address this the principle related to Sharia Supervisory Board, we have developed three new standards. And there is one more standard which is already in place, which is not going to be superseded now. So currently A O P has Sharia Governance Standard Number One. That is Sharia Supervisory Board Appointment and Composition and Report. The second standard is Sharia Review, which is the Sharia Review by the Sharia Supervisory Board. The third standard is the G S five, standard number five, that is Independence of Sharia Supervisory Board. As of now, these three standards that we are developing now as exposure draft. Number one, Sharia Supervisory Board Appointment and Composition. Number two, Sharia Supervisory Board Functions and Operations. These are the two that we are going to discuss today, Insha Allah. The third one, Sharia Supervisory Board Review and Report. These three together are going to replace the first two standards. Not the standard number five. The standard number five for the time being will continue. And I mentioned it for the benefit of the audience already and I would repeat it that that some of the requirements related to independence that were contained in the A O P I F S B joint exposure draft on Sharia Governance Framework included were included on which there were different stakeholders comments. So those requirements have been have been put on aside right now and are combined with the project for revision of the Governance Standard Number Five on Independence of Sharia Supervisory Board, which will be revised in due course, Insha Allah. But for the time being, those those initial proposals in that exposure draft have been put on hold and they will be finalized only when that Governance Standard Number Five is revised. After completion of these standards, there will be four standards on Sharia Supervisory Board. Two standards that we are discussing today, that is Appointment and Composition and Functions and Operations. Another standard that we are discussing as part of series of this this public hearings, that is Sharia Supervisory Board Review and Report. And the standard number five, which is already in place and not being superseded, that is Sharia Supervisory Board Independence. This is the maximum initial background that I wanted to give today. And I would like to jump directly to the directly to the text of the standards, Insha Allah, for discussion today. There is a question in the chat box, chat box that is there any slide? I haven't shared any slides this yet and with your permission, I will share my slides now. In the meanwhile, I just found a question number, there is a question in today in page on page eleven. Okay, there is the specific very short comment, so I'll be coming to this question when we reach that page eleven, Insha Allah. And so I'm putting that question on hold for the moment. Now, with your permission, I'll share my screen. I believe you can see my screen, so let me move ahead.
Yes.
With regard to the preface and introduction today and in the earlier public hearings, I provided all the special like you know, basic background and all the details, so I'm not going to repeat any part of it. If you allow me just very quick look at the significant changes. So the more significant changes are prescribing improved and more comprehensive guidance in areas relating to appointment and composition of Sharia Supervisory Boards, such as fit and proper criteria for S S B members, as well as the disqualification criteria and procedure. Clarifying the preference with regard to appointment of Sharia Supervisory Board Advisors being technical experts in addition to the Sharia Supervisory Board Members and defining their respective fit and proper criteria. Addressing certain earlier unaddressed issues or issues addressed elsewhere in other relevant U P G Ss relating to independence and objectivity of Sharia Supervisory Board Members insofar as related to the appointment and composition of of S S B. Aligning and moving the requirements related to S S B Report and S S B Review Process to the new A D of Sharia Supervisory Board Review and Report, which includes the combined requirements related to the review and report in a better aligned and improved manner. Now, coming to the objective. The objective of this standard is to prescribe the governance principles applicable in respect of appointment and composition of the Sharia Supervisory Board of an Islamic Financial Institution, that is I F I or the institution, enabling the establishment of an independent, competent and adequately resourced S S B. Sister Zahra, can you make a comment for myself?
Yes, brother.
Yeah, I think in the principles, in the principles that I quoted, we have independent, competent, empowered and adequately resourced. Okay, so the empowered part, I think we should add. Okay, we need to just align this this sentence with that sentence. And in this standard and all the three standards, okay?
Insha Allah, brother, noted.
Okay. So then, then coming to the scope, okay, on the scope, I need to clarify one part of the objective and scope that I clarified it earlier in the earlier public hearings, but for the benefit of audience today, I would like to emphasize on one thing. A O P recommends or highly recommends the establishment of central Sharia Boards at the regulatory and national levels. But A O P does not make it mandatory. On the other hand, A O P makes it mandatory to have Sharia Supervisory Board for all Islamic Financial Institutions. So this should be kept in mind that the primary body that is the center point of the central Sharia of the of the Sharia Governance Framework is Sharia Supervisory Board. The roles and responsibilities of Sharia Supervisory Board over the period of time in line with the Sharia Principles and Rules Definition and the hierarchy defined by A O P has changed over time. So earlier it was only the Sharia Supervisory Board of the institution to define what is Sharia. But now it is a whole hierarchy starting from A O P Sharia Standards and the country Sharia Regulations at the Central Sharia Boards rulings and A O P Financial Accounting Standard Requirements related to Sharia. All of them are part of what need to be determined as Sharia in addition to what Sharia Supervisory Board or rather in a in a in a hierarchy there above the Sharia Supervisory Board. But still the central role of the Central Sharia of the Sharia Supervisory Board is still there. And all these standards, multiple having three to four standards on one area means that A O P actually gives enough significance to this area and particularly the area that some of the responsibilities related to the Sharia Supervisory Board might have been diluted. But on the other hand, other responsibilities have been significantly increased. And that is the reason that the function of supervision by the Sharia Supervisory Board has significantly enhanced. This is something that you will find across the discussion that we'll be having on this these standards, Insha Allah. This standard applies to all I F Is including Islamic Windows across all sectors. Regulatory and supervisory authorities may choose to apply this standard to other institutions in their jurisdictions as appropriate. This standard shall also be applied insofar as practicable by the institutions other than I F Is adopting U P Governance Standards, including social finance institutions, for example W A F and Islamic Microfinance Institution. The standard shall also apply to all other institutions, including W A F and other social finance institutions following U P G Ss and to the S S B established for F U K and other structures as and to the extent required by relevant U P Governance Standards. Relationship with other standards. This standard shall be read and understood and applied in conjunction with A D of Governance Sharia Governance Framework, Sharia Supervisory Board Review and Report, Sharia Supervisory Board Functions and Operations and G S five, Independence of Sharia Supervisory Board. So all these standards along with the Sharia Governance, this centerpiece standard or the mother standard, they all need to be read together and read in conjunction with each other. They would, now we have we have multiple comments. That is page eleven, pull off twenty-one. So that is I'll reach there and that is anonymous attendee. So I request all the anonymous attendees to kindly rename themselves. I can see brother Altijani Ahmed, Assalamualaikum. Wish you all the best. Thank you very much, brother Altijani Ahmed, for being with us. It's highly encouraging to have people, senior people like you to be here. Thank you very much. And Ramadan Kareem to you and all of all of the audience here. And wish you in advance a very blessful Eid, Insha Allah. Okay, Islamic Financial Institution definition is the is the standard as per our earlier standards. There is no change in this one. I think it's just one thing, Sister Zahra, why we are putting the reference of the G S this one? Is it the updated one? Because it is updated one?
Yes, but let me also confirm, I'll confirm.
Yeah, but I think it's the same, it's not updated. So in that situation, you would use the reference every time when we used it for the first time. I think we used it for the standard number nine. If I'm not mistaken.
Okay, let me check. I'll check that, no problem.
Just check it. But I'm sure that that same across the board. And this is standard, like you know, applies to all I F Is. So just to clarify that the windows are also included in I F Is. So this is one important aspect that we should keep in mind. Sharia Principles and Rules I just touched upon that this is the standard definition as per U P and this is as per standard hierarchy of definition. I think Sister Zahra, I'm not sure whether the text is left aligned or not. You just need to check it, particularly in the main standard. Even if not, that's not a problem. Now Sharia Supervisory Board, this is very important definition. I remember that we discussed it in the earlier public hearings of this series of standards as well, but let me read it again, because this is one of the most important changes that we have brought in. So the definition of Sharia Supervisory Board is changed and improved. And we would love to have your comments on this today or in writing later. So Sharia Supervisory Board is an independent body of specialized Jurists of all Mamlah, Islamic Commercial Jurisprudence. In addition, the S S B may preferably include advisors referred to as S S B Advisors who are experts in areas such as finance, economics, accounting or law and have reasonable knowledge of Sharia Principles and Rules. The S S B is entrusted with the duty of reviewing and supervising the activities of an institution in order to ensure that it operates in compliance with Sharia Principles and Rules. The fatwas and rulings related to Sharia matters of the S S B are binding on the institution. Now, there are two, three important aspects to understand in this one. Number one is about the main responsibility is defined in this one. It is defined that it has to be, it has to be comprising primarily of the specialized Jurists and Mamlah, that is the main members. But in addition, it has S S B Advisors. The earlier exposure draft of A O P I F S B joint Sharia Governance Framework included the term as as a technical expert members. But the after public comments and some comments by the Sharia Committee Members, it is decided to be them advisors. But they are part of the Sharia Board. So it is not a not a not in the hand of the Sharia Board itself to appoint advisors. Rather, the Appointing Authority of the Sharia Board will be appointing them. And it's and this is standard later on clarifies that requirements similar to members will be applicable with regard to their appointment, et cetera. Appointment removal and all other requirements which are there and this is standard for members that will apply. However, they will not be having voting rights. They will be attending the meetings and providing their views and input with regard to all the matters which are relevant. But they will not be making, having a voting right. Voting right will be only with the members who are who are like you know, specialized Jurists in Mamlah. S S B Advisors will not be members, that is clarified. However, they are not to be appointed by S S B itself, but they are they will be appointed as part of S S B. So S S B includes S S B Advisors on a preferable basis that we have said that they may preferably be including. These are two, three very important points that I have mentioned. And additionally, the fatwas and rulings of the S S B are binding the institution. This is again one of the very important elements that is part of the definition that it has to be having a binding power. Those charged with governance is the standard, standard definition coming from I A S P A pronouncement, which is our term that we use for the for those charged with governance. Other international bodies like I double A S P, I E S P A, et cetera, also use this term, which includes Board of Directors, its relevant committees or equally. Means that in some institutions, it might not be a Board of Directors, it might be a Board of Supervisors or in some situations, there might be a corporate trustee, et cetera. So whoever is those charged with governance shall be subject to this definition and shall be required to be subject to the requirements contained in this and other U P standards related to different governance aspects. An institution shall have in place an independent, competent, empowered and adequately resourced S S B. This is the same principle as I referred to earlier. At least three members should be there. Members means scholars who are members of the Sharia Board. At least there should be three. S S B is content consisting more than three members, professionals who are experts in related fields may preferably also be appointed as S S B Advisors. Institutions are strongly encouraged to appoint S S B Advisors. And we believe that it will significantly improve the functioning, understanding and diversified exposure, understanding the broader picture and S S B will be able to perform its functions in a better way. The S S B Advisors as I touched upon will be subject to similar provisions of this standard wherever applicable. Now, there is one very important clause here that in composition of S S B shall preferably reflect diverse expertise and exposure, including representation from different schools of thought in the country, representation of different fields of expertise, knowledge and experience relevant to Islamic Finance Industry, as well as both junior and senior scholars. So it should be a very diversified, as far as possible, a diversified representation within a Sharia Board and three members is the minimum. But in order to to observe diversity, it is it is preferable that we haven't put in any preferred number, but we have said that it should preferably reflect diverse diverse expertise, which means that you might need to have more than three members who have an effective Sharia Board. Appointment Authority is shareholders, which was earlier in as per U P earlier standard as well. And they should be appointed by the general in the General Assembly Meeting of the shareholder on the recommendation of those charged with governance. So those charged with governance, that is the Board of Directors, can recommend the appointment of S S B, but they cannot appoint them directly. So it means to clarify that Sharia Board is not in the reporting line of Board of Directors. Sharia Board is reporting directly to the shareholders. This is one very important aspect. It was already there in U P standard, but we have kept it here and we have we would like to re emphasize on that. Brother Abdullah Masoom, Assalamualaikum and Waalaikumsalam. Brother Mushtee Abdullah Masoom is here. The headline relationship with other standards, I think in the Sharia Standard Twenty-nine can also be added here. Thank you very much. Brother Abdullah Masoom, thank you very much. I think it's a good suggestion. I appointment, functions and operations standard, my dear brother, should be linked with the Sharia Standard Twenty-nine and also the upcoming U P Governance Standard on Sharia Decision Making. So I highly appreciate your comment, my dear brother. But this one is related to appointment and composition. And Sharia Standard Number Twenty-nine is related to stipulation and ethics of patwa. So which means that Sharia Standard Twenty-nine is more related to functions and operations and not related to appointment and composition. So thank you very much. I highly appreciate your comment and I personally believe that we should have a reference. I believe that we might already have a reference in the standard number in the other standard that is functions and operations standard. But if it is not there, then we will add it. Also, the Sharia Decision Making Standard is also to be finalized within this year. So I think there should be a cross-reference of that one. Also, not in this standard, but in the functions and in the functions and operations standard. So Sister Zahra, Sister Marjan, if you can make a note of it. I believe standard number twenty-nine and S T M are already referred to in the function and operation standard. But if they are not referred to there, then we should create a reference. However, I believe appointment and composition are not linked with the stipulation of patwa. Brother, Brother Abdullah Masoom, if you have any specific laws of this standard and any specific laws of of standard twenty-nine related to appointment and composition or anything related to that, if you believe that something is relevant here, then please let me know that we can create a specific link, cross linkage of that item. But with regard to the whole standard linkage, I think that is more needed in the function and operation standard. Again, highly appreciated and these are the comments that we look towards like you know, the senior comment from the senior member like you. Brother Mohammed Ayub has a comment that my humble view is that S S B Advisors may also be given voting right, though less than the Sharia Scholar Members. For example, while every Sharia Scholar Members have two votes, Sharia Sports for Advisors may have one vote. As S S B Advisors are also supposed to be well versed in Sharia matters, their voting right is expected to improve the decision-making process by the S S B. Brother Mohammed Ayub, Assalamualaikum. Thank you very much for being with us. First thing is that you know, again, I highly appreciate senior people like you taking time out to attend these public hearings is a matter encouraging for us. Particularly in this, you know, in Ramadan, having a bit difficult time. Alhamdulillah, now I can see there are ninety-eight attendees, which we were not expecting at all. So this is the topic that I can see that has its own, you know, its own interest in people. So thanks for everybody for joining us. Brother, you, I will take your comment. First thing is, any comment that we receive, particularly from senior people like you, they will always be taken. And you are more than half Sharia Scholar yourself. You are actually a Sharia Scholar, not a Mufti. So your view for me is highly respectable. Even in earlier public hearings, we received comment from some very senior Sharia Scholars also who had a view exactly like you that they not exactly like you, but they had a view that they must have a voting right. If you ask me, I I might be in favor of it. But there are there are challenges to that, sir. Because the problem is that even the Sharia Scholars right now are not fully fully like you know, well versed with lot of things and there is a risk that experts might not be well versed with Sharia the way we wanted. And there are some challenges with regard to this issue. So from that perspective, the A O P Sharia Committee has insisted that they should not be having voting right. And based on the public comments that we received, we converted the S S B Members to advisor, to expert members to advisors. And this was done after due, like you know, sort of due due giving due regard to the comments received and the comments of the Sharia Committee received. I can tell you that that probably the majority of the A O P Governance and Ethics Board was in favor of having expert members and expert members having voting rights, except for a pure Sharia matter. So if there is a pure Sharia matter, only there they were not allowed to vote, otherwise they were supposed to be members equal in all rights with other members. And based on my personal experience, I can tell you that in some of the boards, the expert members are quite effective. They might be even at times more effective and more, you know, contributing better than some of the scholar members. And this I am talking about based on my personal experience, experience of some people that I know, experience of our majority of our governance and ethics board members. However, since it is a matter sensitive to Sharia and the Sharia Committee feels that it's a matter that can impact the quality of the Sharia Decision Making. So from that perspective, as of now, this is written this way. Based on your comment and if we receive further comments in writing from the market, we might take it to the Sharia Committee again while we are finalizing the standard. But I'm afraid this might not be changed by the Sharia Committee. They they or some of them might even have a view that there shouldn't be any expert advisor, that they should be invited only if need is there. We don't believe that it should happen anyway in case of like you know, We don't believe that it should happen anyway in case of like, you know, that if you want to invite them, you invite them, this will, will kill the process. So they have to be there, they have to be part of it and we made it preferable. We could not make it mandatory. I can tell you some of our Sharia, our governance board members would say that it is, it should be mandatory. Uh not even preferable. So this is something which has been a big point of discussion in the earlier draft of the R S G F. And this draft and at the Sharia committee, joint Sharia committee, the joint working group and the U P governance and ethics board. All levels, it has been discussed at length. This is a middle ground that we have tried to find out. So while we highly appreciate your comment and will take it to the Sharia committee as well as to the board, to the. Uh to the board and to the working group, but I am not too much hopeful that we will be able to change it. Uh one part, uh Dr. Brother You that I may personally kind of disagree humbly with you. Is that half voting right, it will create a disparity. It should be a full voting right. Maximum, it should be a caveat that in case of a pure Sharia matter, it should not be a voting right. That's. They may not have a voting right in case of a pure Sharia matter, but all other matters with regard to when they review the products, when they review the. Uh the regulations, all these things and some of the requirements that we have put on on the Sharia board. I can tell you, on the other hand, while people are, some people are against having expert members, but the responsibilities that have been put on the Sharia board now. Under these standards and which should be put ideally on the Sharia board, they need expert members. They need to be able to know how income has been computed and disposed of. They need to be able to review the accounting policies that are being applied by the bank, whether they are in line with Sharia or not. They should be able to review the profit and loss computation. And I can tell you that all scholars may not be able to do that. And for that, doing that, it is very, very crucial. That we should be involving the experts. Thank you very much. I have taken a bit more time on this issue. Because it has been a significant point of discussion since beginning. So thank you very much for your kind comment and for sure the comment will be taken to the working group. We have comment from Brother Aziz Rahman, Assalamualaikum, in the case when international bank having the branch in a specific country and having S S B in the country. And there is no shareholder but B O D. In that case, the S S B should report home to report. Excellent point, Brother Aziz Rahman. Uh I think it's a very good comment, uh comment. Uh actually, it should be done by the shareholders, but if there are no shareholders. Those countries who allow these branch, branches, they allocate according to their respective company law. They give the powers related to the, uh because even in those countries at time, there is no beauty as well. So my, your question is, B O D is there, but I know the countries where only the country manager is there. So we cannot put all these conditions in our regulation. Our suggestion is that. If you have a subsidiary, then from our perspective, the power should remain in the, if you have a branch. Because subsidiary will have its own general, general assembly and the board. So it is, you, you have used the term, Rattar Aziz, branch. Branches normally don't have a B O D. Subsidiary will have a B O D. And subsidiary having a B O D means that subsidiary has one member, that is the parent, wholly owned, wholly owned subsidy have a parent at least. So that is the general assembly option is still there. But if it is a branch, then in most cases, branches will not even have a B O D. Branches might have only a country manager as well in some countries. So for our purpose, if I, if you ask me. We should be keeping this right with the, with the main banks shareholders to appoint the Sharia supervisory board. Or use the, their own Sharia board for this purpose. If it is not possible, then obviously all the powers related to board of directors and country and the. And the general, general assembly normally are passed on by the local law to the country manager. So whoever the responsibility is passed on, they should be applying it. I think your point is very important. So even if we don't amend the standard. We might need to provide some basis of conclusion or some explanation to this in the footnote. So Sister Zahra and Marjan, if you can make a note of it, some explanation of it would be needed anyway. So we would be discussing it with the working group and will be providing some explanation either as a footnote or as a basis of conclusion. But I don't believe personally that it needs an amendment to this standard. Thank you very much, Brother Aziz, for an excellent comment. Doctor Munir Ahmed has a comment, what if a trainee member be added in composition and reduce their weightage on voting right? Brother Munir, I don't know, uh Assalamualaikum first, uh thank you very much for being with us. Uh why we want less weightage for people? All, all Muslims are equal. Decision making right, you need to decide who are the people you are giving. Anyway, the answer to your question is. That we have already included in the diversity clause that there should be junior and senior scholars. Uh and this will actually help some of the scholars being able to devote more time and being more active. And others being more like, you know, experienced and able to contribute more on the knowledge side. So from that perspective, we have not asked about trainee members, but we have talked about junior members. So the junior member requirement is covered through a diversity clause. So I don't think trainee member requirement might be there. But again, thank you very much for your important comment. I personally agree that junior members involvement is necessary. That is already covered in that clause and uh but Sharia supervisory board is not a training place. I would completely disagree. Even junior members should be independently strong enough to be able to meet the fit and proper criteria. And to be able to uh to vote for any of the Sharia related matter. So from that perspective, I humbly disagree with you, but your comment will be taken to the government, to the working group and the board and they will decide on this part. Half part of your comment is already covered, as I mentioned, through junior members' involvement. Okay, now we have from Danyar Memirov. Uh if S S B members were appointed in different date, not in the general meeting of shareholders, but on extraordinary meeting of shareholders. Now, this is a good point. So extraordinary meeting is also a general meeting. It's called extraordinary general meeting. There is annual general meeting and there is extraordinary general meeting. So for me. Extraordinary meeting is also a general meeting as per law that as, as much as I understand the law. However, we will take your comment and we'll see if we can need to clarify this part. But we did not say in the annual general meeting. Number two, they can be appointed on different dates. If you ask me, I will always recommend that they should be appointed on different dates. So if, again, rotation requirement is not there in our standard anymore. But I would be saying that even, even if the board changes, all the board should not change on one day. So I am personally in favor of like, you know, appointing different members on different dates. So we have not put it as a condition that all of them should be appointed on a single day. Now, this year, we have end of five year period of the service of those S S B members. How we should appoint or renew their appointment? Should we wait for next year general meeting or shareholders or we can appoint them again at extraordinary shareholder meeting, which is very difficult to organize? Uh I think my suggestion is that if I am in your place, I would wait for the next general meeting. Although, although they should have been appointed and if, for me, if you ask me a question. I would say if the next general meeting is expected within next couple of months, three months or so. You should be waiting for that meeting and you can extend few months. If that meeting is going to happen after ten, eleven months or nearly a year. In that situation, I would suggest that extraordinary meetings should be there. Uh either way, uh you cannot appoint them themselves, yourselves. So you need to appoint them through the general assembly. So extraordinary meetings should be called if there is enough time. I think Sister Zahra and Sister Marjan again, this point is very important. So maybe we need to clarify again this point that, that depending on. Uh depending on the, uh depending on the, uh depending on this like, you know. Uh the expected time of general assembly, a little bit of relaxation can be provided or otherwise. General meeting should be called. Thank you very much. You have very good, very valuable comments. Thank you very much. It will add value for sure. We need to clarify it somewhere. Uh Brother Abdullah Masum has a comment such as, such the clause two one of Sharia standard. Twenty nine is relevant to the definition of patwa in this draft. Uh thank you very much, Brother Abdullah Masum. We will see. In that situation, we can just put a cross reference system Marjan and Sister Zahra, if you can make a note of it. If Brother Abdullah Masum's comment, we take it, then in that situation, we don't need to put it in the scope, but only in the definition of patwa. Uh we, we need to see if we need a patwa definition here or not. No, I think we need it. So in that situation, we can put also C clause to one of Sharia standard twenty nine, something like this. Okay? Thank you very much, Brother Abdullah Masum again. Uh Mufi Fajrul Hassan, Assalamualaikum, Brother Fajrul Hassan, thank you very much for being with us. And endorse to have the voting right for expert member, for that sometimes there are, will be some matters which lead to Sharia or non Sharia. So what will happen in such case? Uh brother, uh brother Mufi Fajrul Hassan, we, I highly appreciate any Sharia scholar saying that. Because sometimes, I'm, I'm sorry, but at times it looks like there is a, there is a war between scholars and experts. It's not a war. We are all here for the same purpose. We want Sharia to be paramount. And when we say that we want expert members in the Sharia board, it's not that we want Sharia to be, to be, to be secondary. No. We want upholding Sharia by having better understanding of what happens on the ground. That is the only purpose. So if I say I prefer to have expert member on Sharia board. It is because we believe expert members at time can provide greater value addition for finding the right Sharia decision. That's the only reason. It is not to undermine Sharia scholars. Anyway, I highly appreciate. Uh but probably we will take your comment again and but I can mention like, you know, that as I, as I mentioned that. As of now, it's sort of a middle ground that you will have expert advisors without voting right. Uh brother, the second part of your question, for sometime there will be some matter which lead to Sharia or non Sharia. So what will happen in that case? That is the point where when we originally suggested expert, expert members, then we said. That they will not be voting, having a voting right. They will have a, they can give a view, but not a voting right. On a pure Sharia matter and the chairman will decide what is a pure Sharia matter, which is what is Hanaal and what is Hara. If it comes to that level, then only the Sharia scholars to report. This was as per the original exposure draft. But this exposure draft removes that part and simply expert advisors will not be having a voting right, although they have a right to give their view. Thank you very much again and I highly appreciate your comments, sir. Brother Ayub, you are most welcome, sir. Uh brother Enes Ahmed Thavar has a comment, uh S S B shall be approved by the central bank. Brother Enes, uh it is like, you know, sort of personally, personally. Uh I believe it is not possible and not practicable. And the reason is that central bank or the regulator cannot interfere into each matter related to the banks. So for example, there is a matter of appointment of external auditors or the independent directors. You need, you need a consultation of the regulator at times in some regulatory environments or otherwise. They don't ask you to put a regulatory environment, but they just ask you to follow a fit and proper criteria. So this is a, this is a matter that we believe that in most of the regulator, most of the R S A's. The regulatory and supervisory authorities, they normally prefer to have an involvement in that in the final approval process. Or some regulators have approved list of Sharia scholars etc. Some have a fit and proper criteria and we in this standard also have clarified a fit and proper criteria. So considering all of it, we have such, we believe that this approval by central bank should not be a requirement set by U P standard. Rather, it should be a decision of the respective regulator, whether they want it or not. But what is minimum required is that there should be a fit and proper criteria. So anybody should not be below that level. So further details are left again with the central bank. Again, this is a very important comment. I think we should be providing the clarification on this matter. And for sure, we will take this comment to the working group if they agree with this. But even if they don't agree with this. We should be providing a clarification in the basis of conclusion in line with the clarification that I provided. Uh anonymous attendee has said a comment, has given a comment, if they are subject matter expert, they should be given. Yeah, I think you are talking about they should be given a voting right. I think you are talking about this thing. I, I personally agree as I mentioned earlier in my comment as well. If you can just complete your comment and may I request you to kindly rename yourself so that we know that from which end the comment is coming. And we can record. One, one thing is very important that if you don't put your names. Then the comments to, when we take the comments to the working group and to the board, there, it is not identifiable from the person, about the person and the institution. I al, I always request that you may kindly rename yourself with your, with the proper name. And if possible, you can add the institution name with your uh name or ID also, so that we can record it more appropriately. Doctor Munir Ahmed again has a comment for appointing chairperson of S S B, who is preferred to appoint the chairperson of S S B. Uh obviously, uh it will be appointed, it will, we, we have not put in a self-election process. We believe that who appoints the S S B will be appointing the chairperson and chairman or the deputy chairman as well. Uh Brother Abdullah Masum, the definition of patwa is maybe changed some, such as word is Sharia opinion, which may write is Sharia based opinion. Uh thank you very much, Brother Abdullah Masum. We take your comment to the, to the, to the working group and to the Sharia committee. These definitions are reviewed by Sharia committee also and these are aligned with the Sharia standard also. So we may not have too much liberty in changing it. But we will see if it is necessary to change. Thank you very much for your kind comments, sir. Brother Aziz Rahman, you are welcome, sir. Brother Abdullah Masum has made a comment also, the word by Mufi should be added after the word opinion in the definition of the patwa which we read. Patwa is a Sharia based opinion by Mufi. Uh Brother Abdullah, Abdullah Masum, I think that we are not using the term Mufi. Rather, it's the institutional framework. So this is a patwa coming from a Sharia board. And we have used the term, not used the term Mufi, because Mufi term may be interpreted differently in different countries. In some countries, only the government authorized one single person for the whole country will be a Mufi. In some countries, some of the very senior mashayis are not called Mufi. So it is. For example, in the subcontinent Pakistan, India, Bangladesh, it is more common to, to, to call like, you know, a, a, a. Specialized Mufi as Mufi, uh but it might, it was, it was not common everywhere in this different parts of the world. So this would not be appropriate. Thank you for your comment. Again, as I mentioned, every comment will be taken to the working group and to the board. We have comment from Mister Guyu Gulichha, Assalamualaikum, Abra Katu to my view. Again, my apologies if I miss a spell or mispronounce any name because I, as I mentioned every time. People join us from different parts of the world and it is very difficult for us at time to pronounce their name. So if there is a mistake in pronouncing any name or if I call somebody as Mister instead of Miss or vice versa, my apologies for that. Uh to, to my view, S S B should have an autonomy protected by the law against shareholders. I have a real experience where the S S B approved Karthasan loan which is supposed to be for needy in education or marriage imaging. This S S B approved it for individual shareholder to be given huge amount of the money for imports, trades as Karthasan is this rarely Sharia compliant. I really don't want to mention the bank and country. Thank you very much. It's an excellent comment. My only suggestion is. And, and thanks for not mentioning the name of the bank and country. This is also important that it should not be mentioned. Uh let me be very clear. Sharia board can see that it is preferred to give Karthasan, number one. Sharia board can see that. Harth Hassan is to be given according to these conditions as per Sharia, this, 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 this. But Sharia board cannot be involved in a business decision. Sharia board cannot say that you give Harth Hassan to this party. This is a business decision. Authority is with the management and those charged with governance. So there is a fundamental issue of distribution of power here. For us, Sharia board has its binding opinion and I mentioned this thing in the definition. For us Sharia board has its binding opinion and I mentioned this thing in the definition of Sharia board. That since view is binding on the institution only in case of Sharia matter. So if it is not a Sharia matter, this is not binding. So if the Sharia board says it is good to have Karthasan, is it mandatory to give Karthasan? Probably no. So then Sharia board cannot ask that you give Karthasan. And asking to give Karthasan to a specific person is a breach of the powers of Sharia board. That should never happen. I think that the second point that you talked about the law and the autonomy part. I believe that this standard actually is providing reasonable autonomy. But then uh even the 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 shareholders cannot take any operational decision by themselves. Board of directors can take, but Sharia board can stop that operational decision if it is against Sharia. But Sharia board cannot take a business decision and even if it takes a business decision, Board of trustees, a board of directors and the those charged with governance and the management are under no responsibility to follow the Sharia Sharia board Sharia board uh view in this matter. So the matter that you can do, you are mentioning brother, I think can be addressed within the tenant, within the within the within the details and the provisions provided in this standard already. Brother Atijani Ahmed, do we need to present the position of the SSB on the organizational structure of the institution and to whom it should report? Uh brother Atijani, I think it should be mentioned on the overall organization structure. And it should be reporting only to the Sharia, only to the general assembly of the shareholders, that is the shareholders. Should not be reporting to anybody else. It should be having a reasonable autonomy. As our earlier brother was asking about autonomy, so adoption of this standard. We believe these set of standards of A O P gives enough autonomy to the Sharia board. Okay, so we move ahead, appointing authority regulation. Who will fix the regulation? We are saying that those charged with governance will fix the regulation. However, it should be it shall be subject to like you know the time to time approval. So shareholders will be periodically authorized those charged with governance to pick the regulation. But those charged with governance will not be having the absolute authority to pick the remuneration of Sharia board. And Sharia board can refer to those charged with governance for the administrative matters, but will not be in the reporting line. But it will be in the reporting line only of the shareholders. Appointment of temporary Sharia board by the by the RSA, that is the regulatory authority. If there is no SSB in institution or it is not reappointed within the given time by the RSA. In that situation, RSA may be appointing the temporary Sharia board whose boss will be borne by the institution. Appointment or there should be proper appointment contracts of the Sharia supervisory board identifying the terms of preference and the suggested term of services between three to five years, not less than three years and not longer than five years. Less than three years is an independence threat and more than five years is a third independent threat as well. Means that being too short is the independence threat on the person because he will be having a sword on his head that okay, every year I need to be reappointed. So in that situation, he may be, his independent decision making may be jeopardized by a risk of not being appointed immediately next year. While on the, in case of having it too long, having it longer than five years and then having multiple terms of five years might be too long. So between three to five years is okay and while rotation requirements are not included here, but the earlier draft was putting a rotation requirement that generally not more than two terms should be provided for each SSB member. But now those requirements have been uh put on hold and have been moved to the Sharia, to the Sharia board independence standard project. That will be done in due course, Insha Allah. Competence and capability considerations for appointment. So this is very important that they must be very competent. Uh this is, there has to be, there have to be factors that are to be considered uh for this purpose. Uh which is like you know that these are the factors that are in addition to the fit and proper criteria. So the for for in incompetence and capability, multiple factors like uh qualifications, experience and the capacity to undertake the responsibilities, being mentally fit, having sound knowledge of the business. Uh not only Sharia but also the business can allocate sufficient time and attention to the institution. Uh considering all these points, this is important to note. Uh sister, sister Zahra. Uh we have a comment on paragraph number twenty one and we have a comment, just note a comment here because point, the time element was also linked with the rotation and the the number of seats element. So I know brother Sohaib was attending here and he might not be eh eh happy with my noting like this. But we just need to take it to the working group because we remove the number of seats requirement. So the comment on twenty one and this this requirement we need to reassess in line with. Uh when we finalize the standard, we need to reassess in line with what we have moved to the other, 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 other other standard, whether we need to keep it here or to move to the other standard. For sure, the paragraph number twenty one related requirement that has been identified by the anonymous attendee, I will come to that point. That is like you know, uh very more important. Then there is a fit and proper criteria. They have to be Muslim individuals, well versed in Fakhan, Usulul Feth, Sharia related and pre-fac related academic qualification equivalent to master's degree or above. Brother Abdullah Masoom, we have not put a Mufti requirement here. Reason is that all countries in the world may not have a Mufti designation as I mentioned earlier and that is the reason that this is the requirement for the Sharia board and the Sharia scholar members, okay? So Muslim individuals, well versed in Fakhan, Usulul Feth, Sharia related, preferably for Fekh related academic qualification. Equivalent of ma- of a master's degree or above from a recognized educational institution. Suitable practical experience or research and academic experience, at least ten years in the area of Kapal Maamlaat. Uh uh the suitable practical experience of research and uh academic experience in the field of Islamic finance, economics, banking, law, business or other relevant fields. So knowledge of Sharia is not enough unless practical experience or research and academic experience in the in the, in the business and finance and economics related fields is not there. Good command of Arabic and common business languages in the jurisdiction. So it is an end requirement. So even uh it so it is improved, it is preferred that the common business language normally English in the respective jurisdiction, that is the language in which the laws are made or with which most of the communication is made. So they should be having good command of that as well, reasonable understanding of economics, law, banking, finance or related fields. Demostable interest in the in in commitment. Now, this is important that they can be Sharia scholars, they can be having research. But they must have demonstrable interest and commitment to Islamic banking and finance. It should not happen that they are sitting in a Sharia board of Islamic banking and in the research papers they are writing that the conventional bank interest is not Hara. I'm just giving you an example. So the demonstrable interest and commitment to the field of Islamic banking and finance is relevant, important. Or if they should not be writing papers that Islamic banking is Hara. So this is, I'm just giving you examples. So this is very important that this has to be there. And not having anom- anom- anomalous opinions in contradiction of the well-established contemporary scholarly consensus as contained in Sharia principles and rules as defined in this standard. So this is a very important consideration that has been added, that they should not be generally against the 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 Sharia principles and rules which are generally consensus based. They should not be starting up and coming and say, oh, I don't believe in these Sharia standards, I don't believe in this central Sharia bank, uh central bank regulation, Sharia regulations or the central Sharia board rulings and I want to invent Sharia of my own. Again, they may be highly respected and we respect them for their opinions. But in order to have harmony in the standard and standardization in the industry, you need to have consensus for which it is very important. Good understanding of legal and regulatory framework of the jurisdiction related to the financial sector, good uh good character, reputation and market recognition, ability to devote sufficient time, independent and free from conflict of interest. So item number K also sister Zahra, related to the same point. Again, I do not want to conclude that it needs to be deleted. My point is that we should take conscious decision about these points together. There is another fit and proper criteria here for SSB advisors. Let me quickly go through this one, then I can see there are some comments, so I'll take the comments together. So the following criteria shall be considered for the SSB advisor, so they also must be Muslim. So SSB advisors also have to be Muslims because they have to sit in the Sharia board and have to give on the matters. So we do not want non-Muslims to be sitting on the Sharia board. Basic understanding of Sharia principles and rules and preferably an appropriate understanding of Kapal Maamlaat as appropriate to Islamic banking and finance. So we are not seeing any expert who doesn't understand Sharia at all. Who doesn't understand Islamic Sharia standard because Sharia principles and rules include the whole hierarchy. So we do not want any expert, even if he is a, he is the, he is the most senior person in law or in accounting or in economics in the country. If he does not understand Sharia principles and rules, we do not want that person to be sitting on the Sharia board. Because it's not only about getting the share, the technical expertise. It's also, it is about a person being able to contribute positively towards Sharia decision making. In which case, the basic knowledge of Sharia is a must. So for our expert members or now what we call the SSB advisor, we are not saying that they should not be, they should, they may be okay if they don't understand Sharia, no. Then they, this is their first requirement before their technical expertise requirement. Their technical expertise requirement will come later. Well versed and holds a high standing in their respective field or expertise. So this is later than the Sharia. So even expert members have to be Sharia reasonably experts and understanding Sharia. They are not Mufti, they are not Sharia scholars, but they must have reasonable understanding of Sharia and Kapal Maamlaat. Suitable academic master's degree or above end of professional qualification, suitable practical experience of research etcetera, this, this, this. And preferably fifteen years but not less than ten years. Good understanding of legal and regulatory framework, good command of common business language, demonstrable interest and commitment in the field of Islamic finance in finance. Again, this is a condition that I may be a good accountant, working as head of audit in a B four firm. But if I don't have the Sharia knowledge and if I don't have the demonstrable interest and commitment in this field, I am not eligible to sit in a Sharia board. Good character, reputation and market recognition, ability to devote sufficient time and independent and free from conflict of interest. Let me take two quick paras, after that I will come to all the comments together. Ethical considerations for appointments as an SSB member. So these are the common ethical requirements which are there as being convicted or if they are convicted of this, 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 they should not be like you know uh they cannot be there. So this is there. Just one thing sister Zahra and sister Majan coming to my mind. I think we had a reference to A O P's code of ethics somewhere, but not here. I think we have the reference, but I would, I would prefer that we create a reference to the A O P code of ethics here as well. I'm not going into detail about each of these points, uh members like our, the honorable participants today can provide any comment if they have any comment on these considerations. On, I will take one more area, uh comment, uh one more para before going to comments because I know there is a comment on para twenty one. An SSB member may be disqualified if he ceases to be a person of good character and reputation, no longer holding a position of the respect among peers. Fails to attend the minimum number of meetings in a year without a reasonable excuse. Is associated with any unethical or illegal activity, including contravening any of the requirements of the standard of the financial banking or corporate regulatory system. Uh sister Zahra and Majan, please note, I think we might need to put a code of ethics requirement here as well. Is convicted of any criminal or criminal offense, including financial in propriety or moral tur- uh turpitude, including this misdemeanor. This, this meaner, this teener, misdemeanors. My apologies, this is, you know, very difficult time in Ramadan, so. Is dismissed in the capacity of employee or director from any institution or company or the grounds of fraud, misrepresentation or breach of trust. Breaches the maximum limit of global, local uh SSB members as specified by the respective RSA. Or misuse this men, misinformation and privileged information about the institution or its client obtained as a result of a position. For example, for personal benefit or in the manner that is detrimental to the competitive interest of the institution in the marketplace. So these are all requirements for disqualifications, uh like no provision for disqualification. Uh I think, let me first take this question which was there since beginning about clause eleven. So why A O P put more restriction on SSB membership taken into consideration? They don't, they don't seek membership but they approached by the banks while nobody say anything about board of director membership. Taking into consideration, they apply for the membership. I have two answers to you. First answer is that, first answer is that the, the Sharia boards may not be approaching, but I know people approach. So if you want, I can show you my WhatsApp message where some people time to time approach me to be forwarded for Sharia board membership position. So I'm sorry, consider them human, please. I can tell you this is human thing. We should consider them human. They are highly respectable and most respectable for us. Because of their knowledge, their wisdom and their uh personal like you know, personal uh behaviors and their uh religious uh, you know, uh learnings and everything. But they are human. So just consider them human. This argument I don't buy. So however, let me just be very clear that the rotation requirements have been removed from this standard as I mentioned uh earlier two times in this today's discussion already. So the rotation requirements have been removed. So sister Zahra, please make a note of it. We discussed it in the Sharia committee also that this paragraph twenty one F might be moved, might need to be removed. Because uh uh because I know brother Sohaib will not be happy on hearing this. But we might need to put it together with the, with the rotation, rotation and number of seats requirement. So rotation and number of seat requirements are removed from this set of standards and they are moved to the project related to dependence of Sharia supervisory board. So as of now, these standards are not having any requirement. But I can tell you another answer to your question. The third part is that if this is your misunderstanding about board of director. I can tell you every, every good regulatory authority has put a requirement on the number of board of board seats. And I can tell you that actually what work was originally done by A O P and FSB jointly on the regulated Sharia governance framework were based on a proper study of different countries' requirements with regard to board of directors. About number of seats that one board of directors member can hold. So unfortunately, your understanding on this part, my, my dear brother, is not correct. So the work that was done was based on that. However, let me be clear. As of now, A O P governance and ethic board believe that there should be proper rotation and number of seat requirement. But that requirement because of the comments received from the market and stakeholders, that requirement has been put on hold and moved to the other project related to independence of Sharia board. Which will be done after further market research and evolution of further matter. For the purpose of this standard, I believe this twenty one F should be removed. Because the main requirement about maximum limit is removed. So this requirement about the breach, breach of that limit, since that main requirement is no more there, so this breach requirement should also not be there. That is my, uh my personal understanding, but again, the working group and the board will make a decision on that. Thank you very much for being with us. I don't know your name or like no. So I always request that please put your names uh and your, if possible, your institution name. Uh and there is another comment from anonymous attendee. I don't know whether the same anonymous attendee or from another one. Maybe have an executive member from the SSB to perform routine tasks on behalf of SSB and ultimately ratification by SSB in their upcoming meeting. Uh to some extent, it is allowed by the Sharia decision making standard and the exposure draft of the function and operation standard. But this is the appointment and composition. So from our perspective, this should not be, uh this is acceptable. Subject to a condition that doing this thing does not absolve the senior members from there or the other members of the Sharia board from their responsibilities. Uh brother Altejani Ahmed has an important comment. What to think of changing fatwa into SSB decision or opinion? Uh okay, uh we will, we will see this thing. Thank you very much brother Altejani Ahmed. It is a good comment. Let me see, actually, we have used the term fatwa in specific aspect. All SSB decisions are not fatwas. Fatwa is about a specific Sharia matter about permissible, impermissible, etcetera, while there can be certain Sharia board decisions which are not exactly a fatwa. So from that perspective, we have kept a distinction, but we'll keep, we'll, we'll review this aspect again. Sister Ajahn, sister Zahra, please make a note of it that we need to review this aspect again. Thank you again. Mufti Fajr, Udu Hassan has further comments. It means that if any Mufti Fajr Nul Dason has further comments. It means that if any SSB member moved to other IBI after three years due to his experience and opportunities. Seem fine from UPI perspective too. Brother Fajr Nul Dason, I think it is actually what we believe is again. UPI's official view is what is written here, which is not making it a rotation mandatory. But I can tell you that standard number five, which is already in place, has a rotation requirement and it says that. At least one member should be rotated from time to time. That standard is not subject to discussion right now, but that is already part of UPI's standards today. So a rotation, preferred rotation requirement is already there. Brother Mufti Fajr Nul Dason, we should keep in mind that in good, in like you know, in independent positions, normally there is a rotation requirement. So the Board of Directors members who are independent are subject to regulatory requirement for rotation after some time. Auditers who are subject, who are, who are supposed to be independent all the time. They are normally subject to rotation after three or five years or at least the audit partner is required to be rotated in most of the jurisdictions. So we should understand that one of the key considerations for rotation, for independence is rotation. If you are sitting on a Sharia board for twenty years, you will have multiple independence threats. One independence threat is that you start peeling the institution as your own institution and you become too close to the management and the board. Resulting in a situation that you might be influenced because of human psychological tendency. The second risk is that you may not be able to review the decisions that you did. Twenty eighteen seventeen fifteen twelve, nine, seven years back. So since you are sitting on the same board for twenty years. The due process of review of the decisions and the products in line with the changes in the market. Changes in the product structure, changes in the Sharia principles and rules related to, for example, the central bank regulation, the central Sharia board rule. The UPI Sharia standard, all these things are not there. There is a self-review threat as well that everything that comes to your review. You say, oh, I reviewed it earlier, no problem. Okay, go ahead. So again, as I said, UPI Governance and Ethics Board believes that rotation is important and this rotation requirement is already contained in our standard number five. However, the detailed rotation requirement that was contained in the exposure draft of IFSB UPI standard has been removed. But yes, the answer is yes to your question that yes, it is better to have appropriate rotation. Even if it is not a mandatory rotation, but having a voluntary rotation is good. As we are aware about the regulatory requirement in some countries of diversity, inclusion and women empowerment, so then he step taken by the women on board by UPI. Brother Mufti Fajr Nul Dason, I believe we use the term diversity. We consciously use the term diversity. And we, we do not want to, we do not want to. If you ask me, if you ask me, in the central Sharia board standard, we covered this thing very, very, you know. Very politely, what we have said is that any woman should not be. Put on the board just that there is a woman's quota. On the other hand, we don't believe that if there is a lady. Who has more capability than the male counterparts. In that situation, can she be on the board as an expert member or as a scholar member? We leave it completely to the, to the respective institution. We have not said yes, we have not said no. We completely leave it to the respective institution, the respective regulator, the respective country. It also depends on the customs. So the customs of like you know Malaysia, Indonesia might be having, having some ladies on the, on the Sharia boards. Countries like, like Afghanistan, you may, you may dream of it. Even for countries like Pakistan, Bangladesh, India, it will be very difficult and very rare in some situations. Again, UPI has not given a clear, any simple view on this one that you should put or you should not put. We do not want to say that it is haram to put them on Sharia board and we do not want to say that put a quota for them. We leave it to the diversity definition as adopted by the respective regulator and by the institution. But without any compromise on the, on the quality and I can tell you one thing. I will take you to the, I will take you here. This factor, if you see good, good character, reputation and market recognition. We have kept it very carefully. The reputation part and market recognition and good character part, they all cover some of the additional aspects also. Some of those aspects we have covered in our Code of Ethics also with regard to all these things. But we haven't defined any, any of these things in detail. But I can tell you that lot of matters related to that have been discussed at the working group and the board level at different stages. But there are sensitivities and you cannot apply one policy for each country in the same way. So if something can be considered correct in the, in the paradigm that is applicable in, in, in Malaysia. You may not be able to apply the same, in the same way in Afghanistan. So just, I would suggest that we, we should keep quiet on this matter going forward. Again, we are running short of time, happening again and again and again. We wanted to cover two standards today, but for that I have to stop answering the questions. Okay, let me, let me quickly try to cover the remaining some sections of the, of the standard. And then I will come to the questions very quickly, that we are running short of time already, like always. So I have to be like, like very quick on the, on the standards and standard part. Okay, on this part, okay, sorry, we were just already reached except for the point twenty two, thirty twenty four. The need for maintaining objectivity and independence also requires the removal dismissal and rotation of SSB members is performed in independent, transparent, objective manner. Accordingly, the RSA shall ensure that adequate controls are established so that such a process is P from any bias. So we have put the requirement on the RSA for removal part. For any removal or appointment, dismissal or rotation. The RSA should be involved in this process according to their own process that they want to develop. Similarly, the dismissal of a member shall require a recommendation by those state governments and be subject to approval of shareholders. It shall also be subject to RSA's approval unless otherwise specified by the RSA. So we believe that even disqualification and the, and the, and the removal etc, they all have to be considered like this. But sister Majan and Sarah, sorry Zahra, if you can just see, the heading, main heading is appearing as disqualification. But these three paras are not related to disqualification, twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. They are not related to disqualification only, they are related to resignation or removal. So just see if it is a problem in the presentation or it is a problem in the standard text itself. Because then we might need to define a proper heading, okay?
InshaAllah.
Okay, now effective date along with the other standards is planned to be on first July twenty twenty five and we are planning to complete. The work on this standard like you know within this, this month and the next month. The idea is that we want to finalize the standard within second quarter of the, of the year twenty twenty four. If it is not possible, then maybe we might need to extend this date. So we would like to request all the participants to provide a comment with regard to the. Effective date also if they feel that there is more need to extend it. Although the RSG. And this exposure drafts together have been in place for like you know more than two and a half, three years now. So there has been enough time for the industry to prepare, but still if you feel that more time is needed, please let us know. With that, I will complete my presentation and will quickly answer the questions that have been received, the remaining questions. So brother Mufti Fajr Nul Dason has a comment again. Okay, this is, thank you for very much. My pleasure brother Fajr and thank you very much for being here with us. I think we have to close because of prayer times etc as well, so thank you very much. Okay, there is a comment from brother Sofyan Al Dashan. Suggest to also add a point that every SSB member to read, sign and acknowledge the IFI's specific code of conduct and code of ethics. Since different IFI's in different countries are not the same, from ADCB, Abu Dhabi Commercial Bank Islamic Banking. Brother Sofyan, thank you very much. It's an excellent comment, it's an excellent comment. I mentioned about the UPI's Code of Ethics. You might have already viewed the UPI Code of Ethics, which is a very comprehensive document. Thank you very much. So we should be creating a reference to IFI's Code of Ethics as well as UPI's Code of Ethics. In the appointment terms of appointment. Brother, I can tell you that it is covered in the new governance standard related to the implementation of the Code of Ethics. But I think it should be mentioned in the appointment terms and conditions also. So I highly appreciated your comment, fully agree. I think in the appointment section, we need to write this part and we agree with you. Thank you again. There is comment from brother Khalil Taki Uddin Sinani. Could a member of SSB can be a member of a STSB, especially when there is a shortage of scholars in the country. Brother Khalil, if you ask me, it should not be there. In the central Sharia board standard, we have said that, that generally it should not be there because it's a conflict of interest. But, but again the respective regulator in the respective country, if there is a shortage of scholars, they can, they can decide on this part. There is another challenge for the regulators. Because regulators, central Sharia board, normally they don't pay you any big amount. They pay normally very small meeting fee or at times they don't pay anything. Or even if they pay retainership, it's not as big amount as the banks pay. So the risk is that if, if you say that if you are on the central Sharia board, then you cannot be on the bank Sharia board. Then, then there is a, there is a, there is a risk that senior scholars will be. On the, on the banks' boards and junior scholars will be on the central board, which is not the, not the expected situation. So we believe that, if I remember correctly, our central Sharia board standard, standard number eight actually. Says that it is, it is, the conflict of interest should be avoided in these situations. I can't recall exact wording, but you can check in there. But, but if there is a shortage or if the second issue as I mentioned about. Senior scholar not being able to be on the central Sharia board because of being on the individual Sharia board, so in that situation, some exceptions may be created. But in that situation, it is very important for those members themselves that when they sit in the central board. And they have a matter related to their bank or a matter which has been reviewed by them as a member of the bank Sharia board. In that situation, they should abstain from voting on that matter. This is the minimum ethical requirement, I believe. So because it creates a conflict of interest. So this is my quick answer to your question. And I don't think what I can add here further, but I believe if you ask me my answer, it should not happen. Thank you very much brother Khalil Taki Uddin Sinani, thank you for being with us. With that, I think we have covered all the questions that we have received. And we have completed the time and unfortunately, we have completed only one standard. So for tomorrow, we will be having three standards. And I am afraid again that we will not be able to complete all the three standards, but inshaAllah. Tomorrow at the same time, we will be holding the next session of the, of the public hearing. In which we will be discussing the next standard on Sharia supervisory board functions and operations and the remaining two standards which are already planned for tomorrow. I hope that tomorrow time is good enough for us to manage this thing. And thank you everybody for being with us today and thanks to our supporters for today's event. And thanks to the team for arranging it. So back to you sister Zahra.
Thank you very much brother Ahmed for the presentation and we would like to thank the partners and the participants also for their feedback. InshaAllah, we will meet you tomorrow and stay blessed, inshaAllah.